Good evening. We'll get started. Call to order the regular meeting June 2, 2022, Davie County Commissioners. I'll ask Mr. Ruffin to lead us in the indication.
Let's bow our heads and pray, please. Father, we thank you so much for the opportunities that you give us that come our way for us to serve others, and we pray that we would do so tonight in a way that would reflect our devotion to you. Want to particularly lift up Commissioner Mark Jones, Lord, and ask that you help him as he has what we hope is just a minor cold and that he'll be back and ready to continue to do your business. For those, Lord, around the world, men and women who are serving us, we just ask for your continued protection of them and remind them how grateful we are to be served by them. For tonight's business, Lord, we ask for guidance. We transact business that affects a lot of people, and so we ask for your guidance and your wisdom, that we would do that in a way that would be pleasing in your sight. We thank you for the many ways that you show your grace and mercy to us each and every day. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. I'm going to stand for the pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll do Ethics and Conflicts Disclosure. Mr. Vogler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, according to North Carolina General Statute 168-86 and the Davie County Code of Ordinance, Code of Ethics adopted December of 2019, I'd ask each of you, before you adopt the agenda, if you have any actual, potential, or perceived conflicts of interest respect to any matter on the proposed agenda which may come to you tonight on a vote. If so, please speak up.
Mr. Chair, seeing no one speak up, I would assume that there's no actual, perceived, or potential conflicts of interest of any board member with regards to this agenda.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll move to adopt the agenda. I will make one note that there is no solar presentation or public hearing tonight that was previously on an agenda, or, excuse me, on this. It will be held in July, so if anybody's here for the solar, it will be held in July. Other than that, motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Okay, motion to have a second.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, four oh, thank you. All right, next, we'll move to public comment period. Mr. Vogler.
Mr. Chair, no one has signed up for public comment tonight.
Okay. All right, moving right along. We'll start our presentations. We'll get our quarterly update from the Partners Health Management. We'll call Mr. Copeland.
Good evening. This is getting me queued up. Again, good evening. Again, my name is Jackie Copeland with Partners Health Management. Please let me apologize in advance. Got a little thing, sinuses and all that, so if I start talking and sound like Froggy from Little Rascals, please excuse me. I guess those who are a certain age on this, others won't. But want to thank you again for opportunity to come and share with you what we've been doing here in Davie County, try to serve your citizens and our residents who are dealing with behavioral health and other mental health issues. First, we want to start off by just looking at a few key areas. We're going to try to focus on, of course, members, which is our main focus, and then how we, as your LME MCO, Local Management Entity, Managed Care Organization, is interacting within the community. I came before and said we have our Partners Community Model, and that's based on interacting within our community and being part of the community. So hopefully you'll see here and see more about that tonight. First off, talking about the two populations that we kind of focus on with our contract with the Department of Health and Services. That's the Medicaid population and the state-funded recipients. I'll talk a little bit just how many we've served. So far, since November 1 through May 31, we've served over 413 Davie County residents. With that, we look at, what state looks at, what they call penetration rate, just the overall Medicaid population, how many of those people who want services are getting into service, the overall percentage of that. We're at 16.6% for Davie County. To give you a little comparison, the state average is 14.5%. Partners tends to trend a little bit above the state average, which we're proud of, and we're working hard to do that, just to make sure as people need behavioral health services, we're there to try to get them in as soon as possible. We're always striving to do better also with this. Next, state-funded recipients. Those are the folks who receive or qualify, meet the criteria for some state criteria for funding, a much smaller pot of dollars. These funds, unlike Medicaid, you have to kind of fit a criteria for it, and it's all based upon the availability of funding from the state. So far, same time period, November until May of this year, we've served 153 individuals with those dollars. Those are folks who have any mental health, substance use, or intellectual development disabilities that fall into state funds. Next, want to talk about the next area where members come in contact with us, and that's our access to care. I call it our front door. This is the line that staffs 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year with mental health professionals and clinicians. And if someone calls in, they're there to try to find out how they can get them the best help possible. For Davie County, there's been 95 calls received so far during that time period, I mean, back of the time period of January 1 of this year to April 31 of this year, still waiting on the numbers coming in for May. Breaking that down, if you will, we had 12 folks call with mental health needs and also 12 with substance abuse needs. Then we had three call with intellectual development disability needs as their concern. And then we had 63 informational referral. This number tends to be the largest because it's just anyone who calls in who may have a question, even if it's not directly related to behavioral health. We have a resource sent, a resource list we keep up, what the community resources. So if someone calls in and they have a question about housing or food, we try to meet that need because, as you can imagine, one of the social determinants of health is just those basic things to have in life, kind of fix people being able to get services. So we're more than willing to refer them and provide information. And we also receive calls from people who may have private health insurance, who cross through shield, United Health. They may call us. What we tend to do with those calls is kind of ask to turn real quickly they have private insurance and get them over to their appropriate call center that they can take care of those. But we have, as you can see, a significant number of those calls. And also, we have five emergent calls. Calls came in of people in level of emergency, and we try to help get them where they need to be. Next, we want to talk about our care management. This is where we serve members who have very significant needs. They may have acute needs, such as they may be, a lot of times with our juveniles, is they may be in an outpatient facility, or they are even adults too in an outpatient facility, or out of the county in a group home or something. We want to make sure we track those. Also, they may be in our community but have significant needs, and we want to make sure that we're there to kind of track these because they're in a high acuity level than others would have. Right now, we have 98 members who our care management team is working for. We have a mental health substance use team, and then I'll talk about the intellectual development disability team. It serves about 32 members, and these are folks who, we have professionals that work really closely. Most are clinicians. We have a little, the state allows for intellectual development disabilities. They allow qualified professionals who have a certain level of education and training. They also can do some work, but it's very minimal, if you will. Next, we want to talk about inner house members that are served through innovations. This is those who are on the innovation waiver or who want to be on the innovations waiver, additional level of services that's provided by our state for these members and their families. Presently, we have 69 Davie County members who are receiving innovation services. Same token, we also keep a registry of unmet needs, and these are folks in the community who say, I have my child, or I have a need for services. We keep up with that. We want to make sure that while they're waiting for innovation slots, if they choose to in one another's service, we try to put them in. If they have Medicaid into Medicaid services, it may be appropriate, or a state-funded services. Unfortunately, 73 is a lot, and the re, one of the key things here is this is all based off state funding and availability. The other unfortunate issue was more. But as I mentioned, 21% of those folks have chosen to be in some type of, some other type service while they wait on a slot. So again, we hope they'll be available to them, and they can take advantage of that. Next, want to talk about Provider Network. That's the group that's really doing some of the face-to-face work with these members, so a little bit of how that's going. In March, when I came, I talked to you about that we were going through the transition, and the secretary kind of sped up the time clock, but we stepped up to that challenge and made sure that the continuity of care of services, and then also to make sure providers were in place. So we were able to bring all those onboard. We had 50 reported in March, and we're still working on increasing that one. But I want to do a little revision in looking at that. I said we had 10 providers that actually provide services in the county. That's number really seven. I think Ms. Julie's here. She pointed that, I told her I had some research, her and Gynette did, so we want to make that change. We want to make sure we're be transparent to you all know. So we have seven that are actually in the county providing services, meaning they have offices here. We have other providers that come into the county, provide services, but they may have offices in other parts of our region or other areas. Looking at that amount, again, I talked about providing services in Davie County. About 25% of members receive services in the county. We are striving to kind of increase that as much as we can. We're talking to providers, recruiting them to come into the county to provide services here. We know that you do have, Davie has a significant number of people who go outside the county with services, to a variety of places nearby, but you know, it makes sense to have services here because leaving the county requires transportation. That's another barrier right there for some folks. So we're trying to bring that, to bring more folks to have actually offices here. Then also, we're looking at those community-based services that if a provider does have an office outside, they can come and provide service in the community and have to have a person nearby the community. I talked about Partners Community Model. In the next couple of slides, I'll talk about how we're working to engage the community. One of that, one of that ways is we have a training group, our System of Care Community Engagement Training Team. We have brought on two people who are dedicated to Davie County, providing training, and they provide training on a variety of topics. I'll cover a few of them tonight, but they're here to work within the county. We're excited to have them onboard. They started in April, so it was after I came last time. So I'll talk a little bit of the activities they've done so far. First off, a crisis intervention team, also known as CIT, you know, its training works with our law enforcement, first responders. Right now, we have 27 getting to trainings. We're working on having a training here in the county so that, just like with members, first responders, they'll have access to training right here in Davie County, don't have to go to one of the other counties. We provide CIT training in Yack and Aradale, and we also, well, Mental Health Association of Fortliffe County does it, Fortliffe, I think, some folks in Davie have went over. But we're trying to, we're working with the Community College now on that, to be able to provide those services actually here. They're real excited about this partnership. We prefer to work with the Community College for obvious reasons, being an educational partner, and being so engaged in the community, and so we're working to have that together. Don't have a timeline for that, but we're really pushing hard to get that in place. So folks at the Sheriff's Department, folks at EMS and others, first responders, they can go locally. Also, we have some other trains we've been having in place here. You can see a theme. You see quite a few trains that speak to suicide prevention. As you, we're, before COVID, but even with COVID, we've seen the increase across the nation in suicide ideation and the like, because we're trying to really provide training for folks to be aware of that, some of our community partners and other organizations. Also, you know, human trafficking, I always think a little personally, I feel uncomfortable talking about that just because just what it entails. That's it. Our state, one of the good blessings of having, I don't want to say a blessing, one of the good things we have is we have a system of interstates, modes of transportation. Unfortunately, there are people with bad intentions who utilize that also. And so we're working on training so people can be aware of different signs and symptoms so they can step in and hopefully stop if that's occurring. So we're, so agencies have asked that training, we're providing that. Also, I won't go on too much, but trauma, again, suicide prevention, and then also other types of abuse, domestic violence abuse and other abuse, to kind of help community organizations be aware of that, know where to refer them to, and also to be there for them. Another train we don't have up here that we're hoping to kick off is Mental Health First Aid, and that's a national movement where we train everyday people, can learn about mental health first aid, to be able to help anyone, be it a neighbor, if it's a coworker at work, someone at church, someone you can interact with, that can kind of basically help them get where they need to be. I know we've had a lot of requests on probation and parole. They want to start doing that, and so we're hoping to roll that out, too. We provide that training also. And that comes in two forms, for adults and for children. So we offer both of those. Actually, partners, we decided a couple of years ago, as organization, we're a behavioral health organization, but we have a lot of people who aren't clinicians or mental health professionals, people in finance, people in facilities, but we decided everyone needs to know about having mental health first aid training certified. So we enter into that. It's been, we found it's very helpful because we've had employees who weren't clinicians say they were at the grocery store and saw a friend and knew they were in distress, asked a few questions, and we could help. And so we see it as a valuable tool for our community as a whole to kind of have, so we chose in the training. Next, some of the community events that we've engaged in. As you see here, what we're trying to do is, we have another team, I always blow these titles, our Member Engagement Team. They have a member engagement specialist who, his role, and also community engagement specialist, who their role is to interact with the community and various other groups, try to interact, network, find new ways, ways to interact with people in the community. You see here, we're trying to really touch throughout the community, from working in Kula Me to also looking at how, we're going to the Health Department, the Y, just various agencies we're trying to interact with now. I didn't include the school system. You know, we're really, we had a meeting, I also serve on the Davie County School Health Alliance, and so we had a meeting on a couple of weeks ago, and talked about how the EC program in the schools, how we can work with them and bring, help parents that come through with information, they know what they can look for, as far as resources for their children. So we're really trying to get out there. This is the tip of the iceberg, but it's really trying to be part of the community and find as many ways as possible to interact. Another thing, another meeting or community engagement that, that's not on the list, is one that was pretty recent, working with the county's Health and Human Services Group. They pulled together a group of folks looking at some target areas. One of those is mental health, marketing, and communication, and we brought our Director of Marketing Communications to that meeting. So we're starting the beginning steps of how we can do more. Ms. Wright set that meeting up, and she's even called in Davie Life and some other people. Ms. Julie was there also. So we're really starting to look at how we can communicate and get the word out as best we can in the community so people know. And then, another unfortunate epidemic our country has been in is the opioid epidemic. I want to share some of the work we're doing on opioid addiction. One thing we've been fortunate is to go out and obtain two sets of grant funds, one some federal funds from the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, and then some state opioid use dollars to provide more access to treatment services, but also, as you see before you, Narcan, also known as naloxone, some reversal spray kits. We were able to get a significant amount, and we distribute them throughout our counties to make sure Davie had some. So you see, we distributed 240 of those doses just to the sheriff's office and the same number to EMS, so they'll have that. Most of the time, we see it's sheriff's offices and EMS or other law enforcement, that they have a supply, but it has a certain shelf life, so hopefully this will be able to replenish that and stretch that out for that. And then also, we had a provider, Southern Family Medicine. They're here in Moxville. They provide medication-assisted treatment. They also had a need, so we had them for there. We see a lot of times where people come into treatment and may have loved ones who are using and want to have that in case they have to administer that at home or in the community, and so we disperse those out to providers and they hand those out to them. Last couple of slides here, just contact information. I mentioned earlier, we have our access to care line number. That's available for folks to contact. It's there for you. And then also, we received quite a few calls from members and families that are already engaging services, but they may have a question, they may have a concern they want to raise, they may need some direction or guidance. Our member engagement team is there for them. This is their number. People can call that number. They'll be there and talk through them. It's not 24 hours, but it's eight to five, and they do follow up with people afterward. We also have an email address for any questions they may have. They can submit them in also, and they can, and we'll respond to them. And finally, my contact information. But again, Ms. Wright does, she knows how to track me down, so if needed, you let her know, and she'll find me. I want to thank you for your time, and I want to say how excited Partners is to continue to work with you all and serve Davie County. We continue, we're looking to do more and more things in Davie County, and we really appreciate, again, the county staff and other stakeholders and advocates who are really working with us to help us understand the community, be a part of the community, and network. As I said, the school system and other groups, I know Ms. Chapman has also shared me a few groups. We're really getting out there. We know you've had a prior community assessment that said mental health is a major need, perceived need, so we're trying our best to kind of fill that gap. Thank you for your time, and I want to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Mr. Copeland.
I just want to say thank you for continuing to expand what you're doing and for being such a good listening ear.
Thank you, thank you. That's what we strive for. We're excited that we have more and more staff here in Davie County that can serve you all, so we're looking for more we can do to really meet the needs of Davie County. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we'll move to public hearings. Our first is the zoning map amendment 2022-03, Farmington Meat Processing. I'll call Mr. Adam Barr.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Before you tonight is a proposal from Farmington Meat Processing. They have applied to rezone approximately .459 acres of a three-acre tract from residential agriculture and quality design overlay to neighborhood business quality design overlay. The subject property is located at 135 Nicky's Way. The property is further described as portion of Davie County Tax Parcel D5-133. This property is in the present use value program and is considered a bona fide farm. So as I'm sure you're all aware, that that status does kind of exempt you from certain local zoning regulations that properties may otherwise be affected by. So particular type uses, kind of agricultural, commercial type uses would be more permitted in areas with this particular status. So for example, you could have like a produce stand and have customers come onto the property under this status. But the distinction here with the status is typically that the products sold usually have to be things that are grown on the farm or things that are in relationship or incidental to the farm itself. And so with this business, the Farmington Meat Processing and the specific things that they were currently doing and looking to currently do in regards to their business, we felt that, you know, going from this status of which they're currently permitted certain things that they could sell, but going forward with this particular application before you tonight was kind of the thing that would be best to ensure what they wanted to do in the future. So going back to our packet for the zoning map, as you can see, the property is in the residential agricultural district as well as pretty much all of the parcels in the area. In the packet as well is two aerial maps, one a little bit closer of the property to give you some context, but also some context of where it is in relationship to Farmington Road. One thing that did come up in the planning board meeting that we had was that the property, to get to it, you have to go through Hubert Road, Stayaway, as well as Nicky's Way, and these are all private easements. With the land development plan map, the property is shown as residential, and with the growth enhancement strategy map, the property is designated rural. For the proposed zoning, the neighborhood business district is established to provide for limited small-scale neighborhood commercial activity. This zoning district provides for a range of commercial uses and services to meet the everyday needs of rural residents, to provide employment opportunities for residents of the rural area, and provide goods and services for travelers and tourists to the area. The zoning district is characterized by small buildings, low-traffic generation, and operations with little late-night activity. We do provide you with several points from the comprehensive plan, but two of note is to incentivize development near infrastructure, roads, water, sewer, to reduce growth demand on prime agricultural farmlands by allowing increased density, and to limit rural area commercial development to local convenience stores, farm supply stores, and generally accepted rural retailing establishments, and require them to be clustered near road intersections. This proposal is coming to you as a general use rezoning. Therefore, the board should not consider any one specific use, but all the possible uses that are allowed within this neighborhood business district. The board should also consider the property's potential as a residential use, a commercial use. Do know that the property, if approved, would have to go through technical review to comply with all other standards, whether the proposed reclassification is consistent with the purposes, goals, objectives, and policies of adopted plans for the area, and whether the proposed reclassification is consistent with the overall character of existing development in the vicinity of the subject property. The planning board did see this at their April 26 meeting and voted unanimously to recommend approval to y'all. And tonight, the board should consider either approval, denial, or deferment of the amendment. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have, and I do believe the applicants are here tonight as well.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Barr?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. All right. This is a public hearing, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Vogler.
The chair has announced this is the date and hour of the public hearing pursuant to chapter 160D of the General Statutes of North Carolina and chapter 155 of the Davie County Court of Ordinance on an application for a proposed modification of Davie County Code of Ordinance, parcel D5-133, consisting of approximately 1, .459 acres out of a 3.02 acre tract for rezoning from residential agriculture and quality design overlay to neighborhood business quality design overlay. The property is located at 135 Nicky Way. There has been due notice given pursuant to the requirements of North Carolina General Statutes and the Davie County Code of Ordinance by way of due publication of notice. The public hearing and the newspaper, general circulation in Davie County is required by law. Clerk to the board is attached to the affidavit showing publication in said paper, a date at least 10 days prior to the day's date. At this time, I would ask all who wish to come and comment at the public hearing to come to the podium, state your name for the board and for our records, and then comment on the proposal. I'll be timing you. Under our rules of public hearings, you're allowed up to five minutes. So I will let you know as you approach that five-minute mark, or actually approach the two-minute mark, and then one minute, 30 seconds, and then time to stop. Thank you. So if anyone wishes to come forward and make a comment, you can come to the podium If you would state your name so that it's part of the record.
My name is George Marthanis. My wife and I live at 172 Stayaway in Moxville. We have lived there for 17 years. We are across from the Farmington Meat Store. have lived there for 17 years. We are across from the Farmington Meat Store. We access our home on an unpaid private easement. This unpaid private easement is the only way customers of the Farmington Meat Store can get to the store. I'm a retired veteran, and I'm presently the treasurer of the Davie County Humane Society. My wife and I are asking you to reject this zoning map amendment. My attorney submitted a letter, hopefully all of you've got the letter and have a chance to look at it, explaining why this is spot zoning. It is less than a half acre with no public road access. There is no other business zoning or uses in the surrounding area or in the comprehensive plan for this area. This is not about the Longs or their business. It is not about the grant from the state or whether they say they help with the meat supply chain during COVID. It isn't about whether Mr. Long helps the high school biology department. The only thing, the only thing that this is about is whether a fraction of a parcel should be changed from RA to NB. Without regard to the Longs, changing to NB would allow many business uses from restaurants to dry cleaning to general retail in the middle of this rural neighborhood with no public road. Imagine a map of all the tax parcels in this area with the zoning classifications labeled on each one of them, except for the 0.5459 acre. Nobody would ever look at this map and think it would be NB. I won't reiterate my attorney's points about spot zoning, access, and the quality overlay, but again, I will ask you to consider them. My wife will explain how the proposed rezoning would be detrimental to us. Thank you for your time. Are there any questions?
Good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm Sherry Marthanis. I also live at 172 Stayaway. Stayaway, our house, is the first house you come to when you turn off of Hubert and you head towards the Farmington Meat Processing. Our house is the first one. And we've lived there approximately almost 17 years. I've lived in Davie County 35 years. Both my sons grew up and went to school here. I was a school guidance counselor in the Davie County Public Schools. So I've been around Davie County for a long time, and I've always championed Davie County as an ideal place to live and raise your kids and enjoy a country atmosphere. At the same time, you're just minutes away from town, which is sort of the best of both worlds, I feel. And I think a lot of us feel that way. When we moved to this location in 2006, we moved from a busy, high-density Clemmons neighborhood, and we moved for this very reason, namely to find a peaceful, country rural setting. And we found it. We've both talked about and acknowledged the fact that over the coming years, this could certainly be an attractive area to bring new housing in, which is now actually happening along Hubert Road, but we never remotely thought that this would become a retail commercial destination. On days the store is open, there, this is no longer a quiet country atmosphere. It's just one car or truck after the other, and that can go on all day long, as long as the store is open. This is a private gravel road, and it's intended to serve seven or eight residences. Now it sees upward of 20 or 30 additional vehicles whenever the store is open. And whatever that number is, of course, it's doubled because there is only one way in and out. This business in the middle of this residential neighborhood has already changed the nature and character of the neighborhood, and I'm sure we can only expect the traffic to increase over the years because, of course, anyone who's in business wants to increase their business and their traffic, whether it's vehicular or foot traffic. In this case, it's all vehicular. Nobody is walking or riding their bicycle to Stayaway or Nicky's. If rezoning is approved, there is sure to be some ripple effect down the road from all this in way of increased trash on the road. Anytime you increase traffic, you get people that get very careless about that sort of thing. It's a negative impact on our property value. If you're trying to sell your property based partly on the fact that it's a peaceful country setting and they're seeing lots of traffic going by, that would be a little detrimental, I would say. And it would also set the precedent, as my husband mentioned, for any other kind of accepted business on this list to also ask for an amendment and rezoning for whatever residential area they might be in, not just ours. So thank you for your time. Do, do you have any questions for me?
Good, thank you.
Any others who wish to comment? Please come forward to the podium.
Hi, my name is Kim Stanberry, and I live on 230 Stayaway. My husband Brian and I have been neighbors of Nicky and Michael Longs for 12 years. My husband and I both grew up in rural agricultural areas and value the connections that our families have with the land. From an environmental stability perspective, it saddens me to see so much of our farmlands being turned into high-volume residential areas or business districts. However, from an economic growth and development lens, I understand how much affordable housing lends itself, affordable housing and jobs lends itself to building a strong infrastructure to support the entire county. Prior to COVID, it was difficult for families to make a living and preserve larger tracts of land. Since COVID, we have seen a large shift in the number of families trying to make ends meet on one income so someone could help with child or dependent care. I congratulate Michael and Nicky for discovering a way to use their talents to support and raise their family on a family farm. My husband and I support the growth of locally-owned agricultural businesses, and we support Michael and Nicky as they support their family and grow to develop their agribusiness. Davie County has numerous programs that, that work to support farming and preserve good farmland. I hope that our county commissioners see Michael and Nicky's endeavor as one that is designed to help Davie County residents pursue economic opportunities, become better stewards of the environment, and enhance their quality of life. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to come forward?
Evening, county commissioners. Appreciate y'all having us this evening. I'm Michael Long. I'm the one that's being complained on, I guess. I just want to let you know, the easement of the road is a private road, okay? It goes from Hubert Road to Stayaway to Nicky's Way. My daddy-in-law kept up the road all the years that he was there. Scraped the road, rugged the road, kept the ditches pulled and stuff like that, trimmed bushes, sprayed the edges of the road, keep the grass from growing, stuff like that. Well, that fell on me. So now I've taken on the responsibility of working my primary job, taking on the business that me and my wife has created, and now keeping up the driveway. I guess my neighbors forgot when wintertime rolled around, we had snow and stuff. And actually, it's sort of, sort of shady in places. Well, I got on the tractor and the scrape blade, and I scraped the road for them, not just for me and my family, all my neighbors down the road. So I've done that. I've, we put in two pipes. I asked my neighbors if they would help with the pay of the two pipes. We all used the driveway, and part of them, where the pipes are, is on George's land. And I went to ask George about that. He said he'd pay his part, which only paid part of his, half of his part. But everybody else agreed to it because the road did flood at times because the old pipe that was in there, when they put the fiber in there, they busted the pipe, the concrete pipe. So the road would flood because the pipe was too small. We put two new pipes in. Since then, I know I have not seen it flood or run over the road at this time. And my neighbor Brian, he's also helped out with the road, dragging the road, scraping the road, us filling in the potholes and stuff like that. You know, I'm taking care of the road, not just for my neighbors, but also for the customers that are coming down there. You know, I understand driving in a pothole or in a muddy mess, which, you know, several years ago, we drove through a muddy mess for about a week, you know, because one of the neighbors decided he wanted to fix the road or try to work on the road. And we all drove through the mud for a week. Like I said, I know it's up to you guys and ladies. Like I said, it's an easement. It's not a pri, it's not, it's a PBA. Basically, anybody can come down the road. There's not a chain down there. There's not a gate down there. Anybody's welcome to come down there. I was bush hogging yesterday. Van comes in, leaves out. Don't know who they were. So it's not just all the traffic comes into the business, but there's other people that come down the road, too. Our neighbors use it. You're probably looking at, besides George and Sherry, Brian and Kim, Jonathan, his wife, another couple, Brian's mom and daddy, you know, my mom-in-law, us, my family. I mean, there's seven or eight people going out the driveway in one day. I mean, we got to take kids to school. We got to go to work. You know, we come back home. So I mean, I'm doing the best I can to keep the road up. And like I said, I'll keep doing that, you know. I guess if it falls on me and nobody wants to help pay for it, I'll take care of it, and I'll remember all that. So like I said, I know it's up to y'all, but we're trying to do something good for the county. Like George wanted to mention, yeah, we've done some good stuff with the county. We give something that the community don't have, eight people that would come by and get it, you know, something good. We do kill our stuff. That's our cows, and we have them processed and inspected. I'll butcher them up. We'll put them in a store and let people buy it. Like I said, it's, we're just trying to do a good thing. Sponsored the Davie Little League Deer Hearts. We've done deer in the past. Biology class wanted deer hearts. We saved the school money, some money, so we wouldn't have to buy other hearts and stuff like that. And like I said, the teachers, the teacher, biology teacher really enjoyed those. And so, like I said, that's all I have to say. If y'all have any questions, I'll feel free to answer them.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Long?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to come forward and comment?
My name is, excuse me, my name is Eric Taylor. We have a large parcel of property that's located. Go down Hubert Road, go to the left, it's Fancy Buttons Lane. To the right is Stayaway. So we're a pretty large parcel of property that ends up on the end of Fancy Buttons. And I'm standing here, I guess, in, not really in agreement or disagreement with what you're talking about tonight, but one thing that I do agree with is that property has been owned through generations. You know, it just doesn't, you can go buy a new condo tomorrow, but things that have progressed over hundreds of years, when you start restricting, whether it's a .5 spot or several acres, when the county starts restricting individuals, farmers especially, because I consider myself one, it's not what was intended years ago. So as you look at these things, whether it's the case in front tonight, or something that you might see in the future, really think about those that came before us, the commissioners that came before us, the relatives that came before us, the people that built Davie County on property like Mike's talking about, property like I live on now. And when you start restricting those individuals from making a living, providing for the community, and being good stewards of the land in any form or fashion, any commission, when you start restricting that, you're really restricting something that came way before any of us that fed people in Davie County, that produced milk for elementary schools. It's, you know, millions of gallons over the years. So regardless of how you decide tonight, or the things that you've seen in the past, things you might see in the future, just remember that there are hard-working individuals out there. They don't put on suits and ties. They don't really punch a clock because there's no clock to punch. It's 24 hours a day, trying to make a living like Mike and provide for your family on a piece of property that we really don't want others telling us what to do with. We pay our taxes. So I think with those taxes, that gives us a lot of rights to kind of do, you know, when we fall within the legal realms of what we're doing. But today and in the future, just remember that, that some of us are here because people before us, family, kind of established and paid for the building we're sitting in and worked hard every day, fed the children of the community, provided milk, meat, bread. So in the day and age we live in, in the crazy world that we're living in right now, for people to sit and restrict people for things that they own, property they own, especially when they're trying to do good for the community, not bad, but good for the community, it's really tough for us to sit there and have others sit somewhere and be able to say yes or no. So just, I mean, we work hard for the things that we have. We want, we want everybody in the community to get along, neighbors get along. But, you know, we've worked hard. Generations have worked hard to accomplish and to own what we own these days. And sometimes it's tough to sit and let others be in judgment. But I know you'll make the right decision tonight. I appreciate your time.
Others that wish to come forward? There we go.
My name is Nikki Long. I'm also the other owner of Farmington Meat Processing and Michael's wife. Just to give you kind of a rundown as to kind of where we got, where we're at, I don't know if most of y'all know, this is Michael's part-time, full-time job. He works for the Highway Patrol. This was gonna, is his retirement project. We started this to offer a service to the community as far as processing goes, as far as your domesticated animals and for deer processing, because it's something this county didn't have. So we took off on this adventure, got all of our permits, did what we were supposed to, the county told us to do, got that, and eventually we ended up with a retail portion at our store. That all kind of happened because COVID hit. So we ended up on a different adventure than what we had originally planned. I ended up quitting my full-time job for the state so we could pursue this adventure, I guess, if you call it that. But anyway, after a lot of work serving the community, exploring all of our options, and working with local farmers, we realized that we really do have something that Davie County does not have. We've started something that is, that is not, not around here. We worked with North Carolina Cooperative Extension. We actually- Um, we worked with North Carolina Cooperative Extension, we actually applied for a grant, received grant funds from, um, the North Carolina Ag Ventures and North Carolina Tobacco Trust Fund to add on a small retail portion to our store to expand our local products. Um, this gives our local farmers a place to come in and sell their product, um, if they don't have time to go to the farmer's market, if they've got an overproduction of some type of crop. That gives them a safe place to bring their product, to sell it, so it gets out to more members of the community. Um, we have seen a growth in business over the past couple months, um, but we're not running a Walmart. It would be great if we were because we would be making lots of money, but we don't have traffic, we're not a Walmart. We might, on a busy day, have 20 cars. On a slow day, we have one. Um, and unfortunately, the situation with some of our neighbors is the traffic bothers them, and I understand that, but when you, they're the ones that don't help maintain the road, unfortunately. My husband does that in his spare time, which he has very little of. Um, so, you know, we do everything we can to make sure everything is kept up down there. Um, and like I said, I know traffic has increased a little bit, but it's not large quantities. We don't have traffic in and out 24/7. Um, it's only certain hours of the day. Um, but like I said, we have been very blessed by the community. We have a lot of people that has been very thankful we are here, um, and I hope you will continue to let us stay here.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Others that wish to comment, please come forward.
Mr. Chair, seeing no one else come forward at this time, I would now turn the public hearing back over to you as board chair to close the public comments section of this public hearing, provide the board the opportunity to discuss among yourself what, if any, action we should take regards to this matter.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion? Mr. President, I'm asking for your consideration.
I'm sorry.
I'm asking for your consideration.
Yes. Um, the comprehensive plan states, as Adam indicated, that incentivizing development near infrastructure such as roads so as to reduce the demand on prime agriculture farmland by allowing, increase, by not allowing the increased density in the farmland itself, and then limiting rural commercial development to local convenience stores, farm supply stores, general accepted rural retail establishments, and require them to be clustered around farm, I mean, around roads. Uh, the property is located in an area designated as rural growth area. It's characterized by traditional agriculture operation, pastureland, forestry, and open space scattered, uh, where non-farm, uh, residences are on a larger track. Uh, when I started researching this, especially after we received the letter from the attorney representing a couple of individual, or actually four individuals, uh, I went and pulled the plat from the Register of Deeds office electronically. I didn't actually get down to the Register of Deeds office, we can do that now on our computers, and all thanks to, uh, Register of Deeds, but I noticed that Nikki's Way was a private easement. It was not a road, it was actually just a private easement. I went back and started pulling the deeds then, uh, and pulled three of the deeds which talked about the easement. It's an easement of egress and egress, uh, along the existing 20-foot private access easement known as Nikki's Way. Or in the next deed, it talked about a, uh, access above the described track from Farmington Road along an existing 20-foot private easement known as Nikki's Way, previously conveyed in deed book 116 page 568. Uh, then the last deed, uh, indicated the granters, grantees still have, have, or still, shall continue to have access along the existing 20-foot private easement known as Nikki's Way. Uh, this would not be along a public road or close to an intersection of a public road, instead, it's being accessed by a private way, uh, private easement. Uh, that brings some concerns to me, uh, in looking at our zoning ordinance, and I think that at this point in time, until we can get some further information on that and, uh, research it even further, that I think that you as a board probably ought to defer this, uh, for at least 30 days so that we can look into that. Uh, I will say this, the letter that was sent out, was only sent out on Friday of last week. Uh, we got the hard copy today, but we did get a electronic copy on Friday, uh, three days ago, which two were weekend days, so, uh, I've not had the opportunity to completely research everything the way I would feel comfortable, uh, having it researched at this time.
Do you feel like 30 days would be sufficient time?
I would hope so. Should, I mean, if you wanted to do 60 days, you could go out 60 days, and that would definitely give us plenty of buffer time without having maybe come back and ask for additional time.
Do you feel more comfortable with that?
Possibly.
I would like for us to do whatever you feel best.
Okay, let's, let's go out 60 days then, and that'll give us plenty of time.
If we could, could do it earlier, I would, you know, also like for us to wrap that up.
I would definitely, I would definitely let y'all know that.
Especially since they have followed all the guidelines that have been put before them, and this has come up a little unexpectedly, so if we could work with them the best we could.
What is the impact to the Longs during the 60 days, if that's what we do? Are they able to do what they're doing, or are they precluded from operating, or what?
That's left up to the, uh, planning and zoning administration themselves. I think that they have probably been cited, uh, for being in violation. I've not actually seen that, but I assume that they probably have been, and I don't know if they have stayed that at this point in time or not. Be something you could ask Adam, uh, about, what's going on from that standpoint?
Yes, so they did come to our attention from an enforcement standpoint initially, and so we, we did begin dialogue and just kind of understand what it is that they were doing, aspects of the business, as well as, you know, the agricultural status and things like that. So there are aspects of their business that can continue, um, like the, the meat processing aspect of it. We actually originated with a home occupation permit with. Um, and certain retail applications of what they're doing, they can do, but also there are certain retail applications of what they're doing currently that probably can't continue in regards to, like, selling other type products that aren't produced on the farm. So it could probably exist in, in some fashion i- in that intermediary period.
Well, I don't, I mean, we need to designate can or can't, because could is not helping them know exactly what they need to do. I mean, if we're going to put them on hold, I, I would like for them to be able to continue while.
Yeah, and that's my issue with 60 days, and I'm going to defer to legal counsel, but, you know, to unduly leave the Longs on the fence and the neighbors on the fence, I, I don't think that's the best we can do. So, but Ed, if you think 60 days is good, I'm going to vote for that, but I just raised that point.
And it sounds like that what they were initially doing, uh, is legal under the current...
And they, they kind of discussed how they added that retail portion of it.
Right.
So when they, very initially, it was just kind of that meat, uh, that meat processing aspect of it. With that retail portion, I think there were kind of some aspects of what they were selling, you know, probably were things produced on that farm and fit and things that they were allowed and permitted to do, however it was.
And those things they would still be allowed to, obviously, under our agro business.
That's correct.
That's correct.
So they're still allowed to?
So they can continue as they are at this, at the present time?
With the agro business, but it sounds like that the items that maybe they're bringing in from other places, you know, would be outside of the realm of agro business.
That is, that is correct.
And there would be no way to give some type of waiver for that to, as kind of a blessing to them because they actually were approved by the zoning board?
I am unaware of any means for us to be able to really do that unless Ed has any opinions on that.
The, the only way legally to do, well, the only way probably to do it would be to turn your eye the other way.
Yeah.
So, just to be clear under the agro business, I, I get if they're slaughtering animals and selling them their, their property, I got that, but given it's the garden season, if other farmers brought their harvest there to sell, is that allowed under agro business?
I would, I would think typically not. I would think it'd be things that are in relationship to the actual, uh, farm and/or farm entity that they own and possess.
Production on that individual farm.
Correct.
So if that is the case, we will be causing them to not be able to do business as they presently are.
What type of answer do you think we can get this done in 30 days?
I can push.
Your call. You recommend, if you can do it in 30, we'll try, or if you, if it's going to take 60?
Why don't we try for 30, and then if, for some reason, we're not able to, they'll let you know.
All right, so we have a recommendation to defer for 30 days?
You need a motion?
You'll need a motion.
I would make the motion that we defer action on this until, uh, 30 days, till our next meeting.
We have a motion, a second.
Second.
A motion, a second. All in favor? For, thank you.
You going to get this mark vote?
Okay. Next, we'll move to our second public hearing, fiscal year 2023 budget proposal, capital improvement plans, Robyn Westman, Cindy Chapman, please.
Good evening. Before you tonight, we have our manager's recommended budget for fiscal year 22, 23. Uh, we are presenting to you a balanced budget. It is prepared in accordance with the Local Government Budget and Fiscal Control Act. The total budget is $95,672,000, of which the general fund makes up over $80 million. Uh, we're maintaining our property tax rate of 73.3 cents per $100 evaluation, uh, as well as the countywide fire tax of 4 cents. Uh, the increase in fire tax districts generated an additional $137,868. In addition, we have identified $492,557 to be distributed at the commissioner's discretion for fire and rescue. In addition to that, the general fund also contributes 3.26 cents to fire and rescue. This slide shows how, uh, each fund is broken down to comprise the $95 million that we have in the recommended budget.
Now we'll go to pie charts, everybody loves those, um, except for Mr. Finney, I know.
Yeah. Suffer through with us for about eight slides.
That's right. So for the general fund, that's what we're going to dig into. Um, the property tax, of course, makes up over 50% of our revenues, and, uh, sales tax brings in about 15 cent, or 15%, and then you'll see charges for services, intergovernmental, and, uh, you'll see, um, a little over 3% from American Rescue Plan. We're going to talk about that more on later slides. General fund expenditures by focus area, we're still looking at our five focus areas plus debt service that we look at every year. And you'll see that, uh, education is up, and that is based on two factors. Partly, we, um, we renegotiated the interlocal agreement, and for this year, we're given an extra $500 and some thousand dollars for that. We'll talk about that a little bit later. All the rest of the, uh, focus areas are going to be increased slightly due to, uh, cost of living increases and salary study and retirement increases. And, um, growth in infrastructure, we are trying to put more money into the buildings that we own and making sure that they are kept up well, and, uh, we'll discuss that a bit more on future slides as well.
You guys, I have one question, if you don't mind, before we get too far from it. Um, I noticed we're, on the previous screen, we were talking about 4 cents, fire tax still remains 3 point...
Yes.
3 point something.
Yes. So we have 4 cents in the total tax, the countywide fire tax district. Uh, we also have identified $492,557, and in addition to all those funds, the general fund contributes an additional 3.26 cents to fire and rescue services.
And what does that $400,000 bring us up to as far as contribution?
Is it about $4 million, just under $4 million?
Um...
Have that figure.
Yes. Yeah. That's for everything except for advanced rural fire protection district, and that's an additional $476,706.
Do you have that as far as a person, a cent value on the tax?
I didn't have it by 73, I didn't bring my calculator.
Yes, um, I can get that for you in just a few minutes.
That'll be fine, thank you.
And that is, you know, as opposed to what we have allocated in this current year fiscal year 21, 22 budget of $3,271,000.
Yes.
If that, if that's helpful.
If, if you could, I'd like to see that as a...
Sure, yes, we'll calculate that number.
Dollars and cents, I mean, uh, cent, percent of the tax.
Yes.
Okay.
So, we have, the next several slides are broken down by focus area. This particular one shows education. Uh, as you know, we, uh, our education partners are Davie County Schools as well as the Davidson and Davie Community College. Uh, we have $17 million total funding for this focus area, of which 94% are Davie County Schools. Uh, Cindy, you mentioned that we had, uh, renegotiated our interlocal agreement. We also provided an additional amount for, uh, the supplement increase for teachers for Davie County Schools. We're happy about that, as well as an additional $700,000 related to anticipated sales taxes. This also includes our continued investment in, uh, secondary education through the increased contribution to Davie Davidson Community College, as well as Ignite Davie and Cognition Davie. Our next focus area is business operations. This is $8.288 million. This includes all of the, the cogs in the wheel that make the world go around, around here, technology solutions, finance, county administration, as well as human resources. This also includes our contributions to other funds, including our capital improvement plan, auto waste, and public utilities.
We will notice that human resources looks like a large chunk of this slide. Part of that is related to the retention bonus that we have budgeted and we'll talk about later, but that's all placed in the human resources budget right now.
So our next focus area is growth in infrastructure. This also includes, uh, the implementation, continued implementation of the county building staging plan, as well as our Davie County Comprehensive Plan, incentives for business recruitment and retention for economic development, as well as, uh, our investments in the environment through Cooperative Extension, North Carolina Forest Service, soil and water conservation, as well as Davie County Watershed Improvement Commission. Uh, this also has tax revouch register of deeds, as well as development and planning services and facilities and project services.
Okay, our next slide is, uh, quality of life in place, and...
Can I see that?
Yeah. Okay. This is, uh, we have contribution to the Arts Council, as well as contribution to Lake Louise Park Maintenance, Wabetti Transportation Services for residents show up in this area, as well as, um, operational increases to the Davie Community Park. We also, for the Davie Community Park, we have money set aside for a comprehensive plan update, and we will need that for us to be able to apply for part of grants in the future. Outside agency funding... Outside agency funding for recreation centers is included in this, but of course, those funds are evaluated by the Recreation and Parks Advisory Board and allocated by then.
Yeah, this section also includes our investment in public library, as you can see, as well as senior veteran services, as well as recreation parks.
Safe and healthy community, this is a large chunk of our budget, $34,971,000. This particular focus area is broken up nearly in three chunks, Health and Human Services, Sheriff and Pre-Trial, and Emergency Medical Services. Then you'll see Communications and Fire and Fire Management Services. That includes the Fire Department, as well as the Emergency Management and Fire Marshal's Office. Sheriff's Office might look a little bit larger than usual, and that's because this year's budget does include the $1.3 million increase from the town of Moxville and that contract that they signed this year. This also includes the increase for Fire Departments and Rescue Funding, as well as Community Paramedic Services and the expanded convalescent care services. We did increase the funding for our medical director. We had, had talked with, not personally me, but staff had talked with the medical director and found that they had been donating a lot of their time for us, and they would actually like to increase their time to be able to spend with communications, as well as Community Paramedic and Emergency Management, or Emergency Services. So felt that that was a smart move and that we should probably increase that funding. Okay, growth in infrastructure is $8,425,000, and that is where our debt service shows up. This is, public utility, sorry. They have debt service for the East Davie Sewer, and construction of the regional water expansion facility is also included in this budget. So you'll see the water treatment plant is a large portion, as well as Eastern Davie Sewer.
Next, we want to show you, this is just a one-year snapshot of the capital improvement plan. We'll talk a little bit about that in a few minutes. I know that you are waiting with bated breath, but this is the, the one-year snapshot for fiscal year 2223. So this is for some more detention center design, Community College, the Viper Radio Project, space study implementation, some state budget appropriations that we got for some courthouse renovations, parking lot paving, a couple of starts on some EMS stations that we're going to fund through some funds that we got as a result of the American Rescue Plan, as well as what Paul had told you, I think, at the last meeting, Paul Moore, about the Cannon Play Treescape. So we're, we're excited to present that in a few minutes in more detail. And this is the capital improvement plan for public utilities, just the fiscal year 2223 snapshot again. Water and sewer extensions on Main Church Road, Yakon Valley Road, and in Kool-Aimie, a repair and replace P and V, as well as renovate Dedman Road Pump Station. There's some more years of public utilities, CIP, that will, that you approved a few months ago. So also included in this budget, we're gonna talk a little bit about employee compensation. So we are including a 2% COLA that'll occur on July 3rd, which is the first payday of the new fiscal year. Full-time employees are also eligible for up to 1% of a merit increase that they can get on their anniversary date at the discretion of their director. This also includes a salary study that we just implemented that's over a million dollars. We are also including in this proposed budget a bonus for full-time and part-time staff. That's gonna total a little over a million dollars to be paid out hopefully in October. We're also including 10 full-time employees and two part-time new positions. These total $665,000, the majority of which is offset by various revenue sources. Our retirement contribution rate for the county portion increased by $133,000. So in total, this supports 404 full-time employees, as well as 120 part-time and hourly staff. We think that our employees provide superior services to our citizens, and this budget will, is really focused on them, you know, making them, being paid at a market rate and showing them that we appreciate them. So a bit about employee benefits, our group hospital rate increased 5% in this upcoming budget. The wellness incentive for employees and their spouses on the health plan that complete their health risk assessment and maintain healthy ranges will continue. Our HRA non-compliance is going from $30 a pay period to $50 a pay period to hopefully get those folks in compliance and just going into the wellness center and getting those HRAs completed. This is a very lovely colorful slide that is getting wider and wider every year. So this is our property tax rate history. So each of the arrows signify an increase in property tax rates. The two on the right I'll speak to first. Our voter approved, you see the orange arrow in 1516, that was due to the new high school general obligation bond, where we increased taxes by 10.8 cents. That was voter approved. As well as a small little purple top on each of the last five fiscal years, we increased the property tax rate by a penny in fiscal year 1819 for that Parks and Recreation General Obligation Bond, again voter approved. So the last time we had a significant tax increase for operations was in fiscal year 2006, 2007. So we've been managing to balance budgets ever since then without a property tax rate increase for operations.
And it's hard to see, but the tax rate did go down in 2122 at a half a cent, and it is the same for 2223.
So this is the fund balance percentage history. So fiscal year 22 and 23 are all projections because we haven't closed that fiscal year yet. So the purple line is our financial policy of 25%. The blue line is where Davie County has been since 2018. You see, we've had a decline in fund balance. We're hoping to end up this fiscal year adding to fund balance, so we're hoping to get at least back up to 20%. And with this budget that we have presented before you tonight, get back above our 25%. So the red line is our population group. Those are counties with populations between 25 and 50,000. So you can see that they have been adding to their fund balance, and perhaps significantly, we think that that has something to do with COVID and maybe some COVID-related dollars. The green line is also statewide, so that's all counties in the state. And again, those have increased, we think it has something to do with COVID-related dollars. So you can see, and again, those last two fiscal years on there are estimates because, you know, those fiscal years haven't closed. So we think that they'll still be up there or, you know, pretty much higher than 25%. So we have in the next couple of slides just a review of the county's fiscal policies. And again, we've talked about it before, about maintaining a targeted available fund balance percentage at the close of each fiscal year equal to 25% of the general fund expenditures. We think with this upcoming fiscal year, we will be, be at that rate. We'll also use one-time or other special revenues for one-time special projects, not continuing operations. We'll also develop a capital improvement plan. We'll talk more about that in a minute. We'll also have net debt service expenditures to total general fund expenditures not above 15%. We'll also use a balanced approach to capital funding. We'll use debt, draw on capital reserves and current year or pay-as-you-go appropriations. And we'll confine long-term borrowing to capital improvement or projects that can't be paid from other sources. We'll also structure our debt so that minimum total payout ratio of all debt will be 55% over a 10-year period. We'll also develop a five-year financial forecast.
Likewise, with the utility fund, we have fiscal policies, and these consist of maintaining a minimum debt service coverage ratio of one and a half times, maintaining a minimum days cash on hand of 365 days, and formalizing a projection of revenues, expenditures, capital investments, and reserve requirements, also developing a five-year financial forecast. So the county will incorporate annual rate increases as necessary, and trying to limit those increases to a maximum of 3%, adopting on an annual basis the CIP and Financial and Rate Forecast, adopting and implementing a system development fee strategy to fund those continuous growth through the system, and that was actually adopted in 2018. So you'll see here the proposed fee schedule for the next six years, and we do anticipate a 3% increase in 2023, except for East Davie Sewer, and that's 3.88%. This is quite an achievement, I believe, and I think it really has paid off to continue to contract with Raftellus to help us with our rate schedules, and I'm not sure if Johnny's with us tonight or not. Yes, he is. But they've done a great job with trying to build the system and keeping our rates at such a low rate.
And it's really remarkable considering the upcoming project we have with the joint utility project of the water treatment plan, you know, plant in the Kool-Aimie area, to keep rates at this, this level, to keep rate increases this low.
Other noteworthy items, just want to remind you that we are continuing to focus on the five focus areas, and we do have revised fee schedules that we're asking you to adopt tonight. Our mileage reimbursement rate is continuing at 45 cents per mile, which it has been since Jim Stockard implemented that 100 years ago, I believe, and interlocal agreements with the towns are included. And that concludes our budget presentation, and we would love to entertain any other questions if you'd like.
Yeah, we'll, we'll check on that number, and if you don't have questions, I'll roll right into the capital improvement plan, or we can, you know, answer questions now about budget.
I have one question similar to Mr. Poindexter's. As far as the, between the American Rescue money, the, the bonus for the employees and the COLA, what, I would like to know as a percentage, what kind of increase that is to the employees year over year?
As far as the, the total dollar amount of salaries?
Well, the total percentage.
The total percentage increase?
Yeah.
Do we know that off the top of our heads? Because I don't.
No, I mean, do you want us to just take like an average? I think we looked at an average of like $43,000 a year for average employee pay, and Mr. Effin had actually started on that, and I can calculate that out pretty quickly while Robyn's working on this.
Yeah, so we'll just proceed on then in the capital improvement plan, and then she can look back at a couple of things and answer those couple of questions. Do y'all have?
I don't know.
Typically, it was a 5% increase for the salary study. Most people went up one grade level.
You know, most people went at least up one grade. Some went up more than one grade, so.
And then we are proposing 2% COLA and 1%, up to 1% for the merit increase, so that we're at 8% there, and then the $2,000, and that would just depend on-
On your salary.
The base salary. So, you know, it could be-
Rowan County Manager told me last week, he's recommending, I think it was a 9.7% COLA for his employees to, and the board was gonna approve it. They haven't done what you've done with pay plan and trying to get things up competitively. So he's having to do that in order to keep pace. I think he said he had 100 vacancies right now. So because of your work on the pay plan, we're in a much better position.
We'll proceed while she gets the calculator. So here we have tonight our capital improvement plan for fiscal years 22 through 27. This is just a portion of the information. The Davenport and Company's report has been attached to the agenda. You can find some additional information on page 11, as well as throughout the report. But just to focus on a couple of things, so we've identified some funding sources for the capital improvement plan. So we've identified 6.36 cents of property tax, as well as 10.8 cents of property tax for the GO bond for the high school. This rate is gonna be assumed to reduce over time to fund only high school-related debt service. We've also identified $300,000 restricted sales tax for school debt each fiscal year through fiscal year 2025. This was related to the Ellis Middle School borrowing, as well as $200,000 from lottery funds, which is the school's contribution for the debt service for the high school. There are some other funding sources identified, but those are the major ones. So I just want to focus on the three key debt ratios that we talk about when we talk about the capital improvement plan. I've touched on one, this, each of them earlier, but this is a 10-year payout ratio. Our policy is 55%. As you can see, that we're well above that. Being above that is a good thing. This means that we're paying off our debt pretty quickly. The next one is the existing debt to assessed value. Our policy is 2.5%. And on this particular one, it's good to be below this amount. So this is our debt to our assessed value, and you can see that we are well below that in this proposed capital improvement plan. The next one, I know we've talked about for a few years, this is the one that's given us the most pressure, debt service to expenditures. So this is our total debt service payment as a percentage of our general fund expenditures. And you can see that there's about four fiscal years that we're projecting right now that we will be out of compliance with this, this ratio and the CIP, and this is related to the Detention Center project. So these are the projects that we're proposing in capital improvement plan. I'll go through these, give a very brief explanation of each. So Davidson Davie Community College, a few years ago, had approached us requesting funding for a new academic building, for additional classroom science labs and a conference center for community space. We have changed from what we had presented previously for fiscal year 2223 in particular. We have changed that amount to a million dollars and spread that to fiscal year 2024. That's because the, the Community College hasn't identified a building place yet. So we are going to have $3.1 million of this dedicated to that. We will continue on with the Viper Radio Project. Most of this is for radio dispatch upgrades, two-site paging upgrades, as well as some radio replacements. On line three is a space study implementation, so this is gonna be for the annex renovation, which is the, the building on Wilkesboro Street, to get the former health buildings and DSS buildings to marketable status, as well as some courthouse phase two and the county office building across the street upgrades. Parking lot paving is for the administrative building, the Brock Building parking lots, and for fiscal year 24 is the senior center annex and former hospital parking lots. And then fiscal year 25 is Dodge and EMS stations two and three. So Detention Center is the largest project on here. I think we briefed the board already that what we're looking at right now is to kick that project by 13 months. So over the next fiscal year, we're, we'll be getting revised estimates from our estimator as far as the cost of the Detention Center, as well as, you know, just talking to the board and seeing, evaluating whether we want to proceed or if we want to delay further over the next fiscal year. So this is what it would look like over this next fiscal year if we delay it for 13 months. We also have identified some additional costs at the current Detention Center since we're gonna stay in it a little bit longer. And then for the courthouse, we are gonna be doing some design and planning. We got a million dollars in the state budget to help fund that. And then in the later years, some interior renovations, as well as elevator replacements. So we have some funds in fiscal year 25 for the Davie County Community Park. I think that's for HVAC at the GMS, as well as the next project for the Cannon Play Treescape. Parks and Recreation is applying for a grant to fund $500,000, as well as another contribution of $25,000 from another source. So the county contribution will be $100,000 if we were to get that grant. And then the next two are for EMS stations. So EMS station four will be for the northeast section of the county, and EMS station number five would be for the northwest section of the county. And again, we are funding EMS stations four and five, with general fund contributions that are freed up because as a result of the American Rescue Plan, we will be going out to get financing for the Detention Center whenever we deem it appropriate. We'll analyze it over the next fiscal year. And we've gotten some state budget appropriations again for the courthouse, as well as for $250,000, I think we're going to apply for EMS station number four. So in total, it's a little over $45 billion over the next six years, including the changes we have for fiscal year- we have for fiscal year 22. And of that, you know, a little over $31 million is the Detention Center. Does anybody have any questions about that?
Any questions for Rob?
If I refresh my memory, Robin, I know we probably discussed this, but we're pretty sure we're going to get that, those grants for that Canopla play, right?
I think that we have, you know, part of it is it being included in the capital improvement plan. That's why we've worked in the last month to incorporate it. So, you know, I think we have a, you know, pretty, pretty solid foundation to get that. But, you know, again, we won't spend our $100,000 unless we get the grant to spend, you know, up to the whole $1625,000.
Right. I did some quick math, so bear with me. Okay, so on a $40,000 average pay, one grade increase of 5% would bring you $2,000 more. The $2,000 bonus is another 5%. 1% merit increase is $400. The 2% COLA is $800. So we're looking at a 13% increase for our $40,000 average-paid employee, and that would be $5,200 increase.
But that's just for this year, but so it would be a 8% almost continuous?
Yes, because that $2,000 bonus is not going to add to their base.
Right, it'll be one time.
It would be a one-time thing, and that is why we can use American Rescue Plan to pay for that.
Right.
Because it's not going to be something that we would have to sustain.
And again, that's on average. Some folks went up, you know, more than one grade. We had a couple of folks that went up to like three, you know, and a handful that went up four grades. So you're talking 5% of grades. Some people got, you know, quite the lift from the salary study as they should because they needed to be a market.
I have a nice schedule.
Do y'all have any more questions?
I think we're good on that, Robin. Good there. Anybody else got any more questions here? Anything? All right. This is a public hearing. I'll turn it over to Mr. Buckler.
Chair of the House, this is the day and hour of the public hearing pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes and the Local Government Budget and Physical Control Act. This board is conducting a public hearing on the proposed Davie County budget for the 2022-23 fiscal year. Do you notice that this publication was, this public hearing was advertised, ran in a local newspaper, was general circulation in the county, as required by law, as noted in the notice of public hearing, including your agenda packet? I would ask anyone who wishes to come and comment at this public hearing to please come forward to the podium, state your full name for the board, and then comment on the proposal. Mr. Chair, seeing no one come forward this time, I would now turn the public hearing back over to you as board chair to close the public comments section of this public hearing, provided the board the opportunity to discuss among yourselves what, if any, action there is to be taken with regards to this proposal at this time.
Thanks, sir. Anybody have any further discussions regarding budget as proposed?
I just want to say, y'all know I always got to poke the bear, and I don't mean to be a pain, but I really appreciate every, all the work you've done. You've done a lot of work. As always, I don't love everything, but I love a lot about this one because I like the employees' bonuses. I like the extra emergency services that we're trying to do, so thank y'all for all your hard work, and I wish Cindy was in here, so we'll tell her when she gets back.
Yeah, I too appreciate all your hard work, and again, important piece here is we're capturing more, taking care of our people, as well as property taxes decreased a half penny, which is a big thing, so.
All right. No further discussions. I'll look for a motion to approve the budget as proposed.
Make the motion to approve the budget as proposed.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor? Four oh, thank you. All right, next we'll move to the consent agenda. Anyone have any, anything on the consent agenda, or do I have a motion approved?
Motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion, have a second. All in favor? Four oh, thank you. All right, next we'll move to old business. Do we have any old business before us this evening? Seeing none, we'll go to new business. Do we have any new business before us this evening? Seeing none, I'll go to Mr. Ruffin for the county manager's report.
The only thing I want to do is to thank our staff, department directors, county employees, a number of people who helped to prepare tonight's budget that you've adopted. Especially want to recognize Cindy and Robin for their hard work, as you have done when Cindy was out of the room. Kudos to both of you for a job well done to adopt a budget like we just have adopted without a tax rate increase and any major threats to fund balance. I think it's remarkable. I think we're taking, we have taken and will continue to take a big step towards letting our employees know how much they mean. And you do have excellent county services provided, and we just have an excellent group of employees. We're very fortunate. They have a good work ethic in this county, and it shows in our workforce that the work ethic is high quality. Thanks to a number, all of you, for the work you've done on this year's budget. Very proud of this county and what we do.
Thanks, sir. Next we'll move to commissioners' comments. Start with the ladies first, Ms. Finney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank everyone for coming out tonight again, now that Cindy's back in the room. Thank you so much for all your work on the budget, and I am glad to see some movement for the employees, the gifts and the raises that we've been able to give them this year. I hope that they, that will help them understand how much we appreciate them, and some extra fire funding as well. And thank you, Ms. Julie, for continuing to be an advocate for the people that you love. We appreciate you so much. And thank you, Mr. Copeland, for being here for partners and sharing. And I just want to give a shout out as, to all of our staff, our first responders, and small business owners like the Longes that were here tonight. I hope we're able to get that event cleared up and taken care of and allow them to be able to give back to their community as they just so much want to do. And just best wishes to all of the school teachers and kids this week as they get out of school and graduation this weekend, and thank you all for coming.
Mr. Born Dexter?
Just like to say thank you to staff for all the hard work that you have done. It shows, and you've presented us with a lot over the last few weeks, and certainly appreciate that. Thank you to everyone for coming out tonight. We see some faces here we haven't seen before, and glad to see you. Hope you come back often. Y'all have a wonderful rest of the week, and we'll see you next month, I hope.
Mr. Renninger?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate everyone coming out. As I've said, I say often up here that our biggest asset are our employees, and I truly believe that. And so I think the budget rewarding them was very appropriate and feel what we should do. So feel good with that. I would say that, I guess, today is D-Day anniversary, and I want everyone to always think about that freedom's not free. So with that, appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate everyone coming out tonight to support us and what we do, our county business every month. We certainly are proud of this budget. We appreciate all the work that's gone into it, so thank you. Thanks to all the staff for what you do. Again, in a service industry, our staff is our asset, and it shows, so we have great people. With that, close the commissioners' comments and move into a closed session. A closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 11A6, to consider qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee, or prospective public officer or employee, or to hear and investigate a complaint, charge, or grievance by or against an individual public officer or employee. Do I have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
All in favor? Close session. Thank you. To add an action item after a closed session, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I have a motion, have a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor? Four oh, okay. And then I'm looking for a motion to recess to continue closed session tomorrow at 5:30.
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
All in favor? All right, we are recessed. Thank you.